And note the time, it's 6:31 and we're gonna call to order.
Okay.
Um, let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, Dory, by leading us in a mindfulness?
I do not mind.
(laughing).
Alright, everyone, we're gonna get ourselves ready for this fun. Alright, so just find a seat and take a deep breath in. Break out. Breathe in all the stress from your day. And then breathe it all out. One more time, breathe in. And then out. And then you just find a regular breathing pattern. This is how we gather together to begin our governance is to remind ourselves why we're here. Letting go and transitioning from where we've come from to being here. It's the time to take pause to remind ourselves that we are here for our students. The student voice matters, that our community members and our families matter and their voice and they matter in our governing process. And your next inhale will begin to govern.
Thank you. Uh, any gender review adjustments that anybody wants to make? No. Let's get to what we really hear. We're focused on learning and I think, uh, we're gonna do it on proficiency-based learning.
But I guess. So, um, so we are here. So, again, I'm Jean Bertham, I'm one of the co-principals, you guys hired me. Um.
Kate Groden, the other co-principal.
And I'm Lindsay Cox, I'm a teacher in the Eye Lab at the high school and I run our advisory and flexible pathways this time.
Great, I think Matt Webb will join us too in a little bit. But we understand that, we, we've recognized that we probably don't speak enough about proficiency-based learning and that we have to remind ourselves about the why of that proficiency-based learning, understand where we've been, where we're at, and where we're going. And one thing that's really important about this work is, um, are we able to plug in?
Oh, there's a projector right back there.
Okay, there's a misunderstanding.
I got you.
That's what I needed to do versus.
Yeah.
You just insert, we're gonna set up.
But we do have a, we thought carefully, we appreciated the questions that we received from the board. We hope that the presentation covers those. Some didn't lend itself to the narrative about the journey that we've, that we've been on, where we're at now and where we're going. But we hope to be able to do some question and answer at the end of the presentation. And we can address some specific questions that didn't quite fit into the presentation overall, so.
That's a terrifying question. Is that, so some of our questions didn't fit into the narrative of where we've been?
Yeah, so when the PowerPoint presentation that we did, it, it, there were very specific poignant questions I think we can answer, but it just won't be in the presentation.
Okay.
But we've, we, we didn't neglect or put them aside, so we can address those, so, yeah. Um, that being said, one thing that we want to be mindful of with proficiency-based learning is that this work is iterative, it's, it's, takes a long time. I, Lindsay and I just came from Randolph, Vermont at BTC where the, there was a symposium on proficiency-based learning. And the one thing that we walk away with is like, Winuski's in a pretty good spot and place with proficiency-based learning. That being said, we are not done. That, you know, most schools are looking at ten to twelve years of really completing this significant change in our educational system, moving away from the traditional grading practices that positioned our students to compare each other, to compare class rank, GPA, grades that they got on the essay, like, these were the things that we want to move away from because they lead to some really inequitable circumstances and conditions. So, um, this presentation will walk you through, I've certainly been immersing myself in where this school is at and where we've been and how we've gotten to this moment in time. And excited to share with you the work that's happening at this moment and where I think we're going to be going, where we hope to go, and how we've incorporated students in this process along the way. So, it's warming up. Is there a way that this link might be? So, um, one question, because I do have your questions in front of me. One question is, what is the role of the school board in PBL? And that's a great question. I think the, um, understanding this school board and how it operates, it's about being a consistent and strong messenger about what PBL is, right? It's understanding what proficiency, thank you, proficiency-based learning is and being a great spokesperson for this learning system. And it is a system change and understanding what that change really means in terms of what it used to be and what it is now and how important it is for making learning transparent with students, but also to really position our kids to be more aware of how they learn, right? The metacognition or the cognitive apprenticeship that we think is valuable and important in lifelong learning.
Alright, we're good.
Good, okay, thank you. So, we've broken this presentation down to the why and the what, our journey and the hard work that's happened to this point in time, what we're, what we've accomplished now, especially this year, and then where we're going from here. And then we hope to be able to, that this presentation really supports a nice question and discussion part of the presentation. So the what and the, and the why. So, this example, and I'm gonna just turn to my colleagues here, my other educators, they can chime in if I'm missing something that was important in the design of this presentation. But, um, this was the old model of what education was. It was, it failed in its transparency about what, how a grade was even calculated. It, it was a factory model that predetermined, adults had more influence in tracking and influencing where our students went beyond high school. And it's a model that is steeped in history. It's, it's been around for a long time. We've all grown up in that system, that is the system of education we know, and we're really struggling to change a mindset around those kinds of expectations, right? Humans are creatures of habit, they want to replicate something that was good for them or they want to lean into what was not effective for them. This is a quote that in a earlier presentation that teachers and administrators made to, to the school board, really spoke about what competency-based learning is. So, I'm gonna read it to you, but it's, since the camera is not focused on this slide, competency-based, oh, there is, okay, there's another one. Or do you wanna just read it for yourself?
Can you read it?
So, a little bit of what I think is important about this quote to point out, one is that it says competency-based and in the state of Vermont we use proficiency-based, but they're pretty interchangeable as far as what we're trying to do with the method and other place you might hear standards-based, but it's the idea that there is a set of standards, competencies, proficiencies, whatever you want to call them, that students know and are reaching towards through their learning goals. It's a really important component, the idea of mastery of those skills. When we talk about proficiency-based learning, it's no longer allowed for a student to just get a sixty percent of the information or sixty percent of the effort put in and then continue to pass along in school. There's a rigorous standard that's set and that standard has to be met before you can move on.
So, we thought it would be important to ground us in the tenants of what proficiency-based learning are. The tenant is, tenant number one is a clear and transparent learning expectations connected to the standards are clearly communicated and what a student is going to learn and is no secret, so making it very transparent. So, in our system, we have those, those expectations and standards are our graduation proficiencies and our graduate expectations. Somebody wanna take the second one on or?
Sure, yeah, tenant two is about feedback, that it's used frequently to report growth and achievement as well as inform instruction. Teachers know their learners, differentiate and personalize learning experiences and learners know where they stand and what they need to do to grow. So, it is critical to have a well-communicated and coherently understood process of giving and receiving feedback, both for the student to improve, but also for the teacher to adapt and inform their instruction to personalize it for the student and their learning needs.
Tenant number three, valid and reliable assessment, grading and reporting practices that are tied to learning expectations, favoring more recent evidence of learning that are not conflated with behaviors or other work habits. So, one of the things it's important to note is that behavior grade or participation grade, things like that are not reflected in the assessment of what a student knows or can do. That is different from including it in a grade. So, the proficiencies themselves are proficiencies in a, in a scale or an academic area that stand on their own and, and you can't fudge it by turning in a lot of homework grades and, you know, getting your average up that way. It's reporting on what students genuinely know.
It moves us away from the subjectivity of like twenty percent participation, but is it explicit on what participation looks like? Is a teacher taking the initiative to even define what participation looks like as a skill?
So, tenant number four is about transferable skills. Transferable skills are included as crucial, crucial elements of students' education and outcomes. The transferable skills here in Winuski, we call our GXs. You all are very familiar with them, but we have six of them and students are required not only to engage in those transferable skills throughout their, really K through twelve career here in Winuski, but also at the high school level to demonstrate those at a proficient level through capstones or performance assessments, which a couple of you got the opportunity to see during our January exposition of learning at the high school, about where students give presentations about what they know and what they're able to do in or through the lens of the transferable skill.
Okay, we're moving to Winuski's PBL system.
So, you'll see that, I think the visual really helps think about what the foundation is and, and habits of learning is something we will talk about on another slide, but the habits of learning are really being explicit in coaching students on how to learn. And so, those habits are really foundational to our practice. And then the performance indicators and GPs and GXs are built upon that.
Okay, so we're gonna move into a little bit of our journey, just to contextualize our conversation.
So, I think this might be the third time in the past eight years or so that Matt or I have come to talk a little bit about proficiency-based learning, originally through the lens of the Nellie May Grant Partnership for Change. But just a little bit of history because I know the board changes in composition and so we just wanted to make sure that everybody had a little bit of the historical lens of how we got to where we are now before we talk about what the now is and where we're going. So, starting in 2012 when we were awarded the Nellie May Grant and formed the Partnership for Change, we really started developing those graduate expectations, identifying the transferable skills through a community-based participatory process. And we also developed the graduate proficiencies, our GPs, again, through a community-based participatory process, and we really made sure that there was parent voice and community voice and student voice and the voice of the community very present in that process in the development of these really foundational basically values of what we value and we want all of our kids to know and be able to do. In, and at the same time, we were really shifting how we were doing teaching and learning here at the school. So, moving from the model of kind of the teacher in the front of the classroom imparting information on students and really shifting that to be more proficiency-based, having transparent expectations for students, putting some more choice and voice into what students were able to do in order to meet those expectations. And then we were working on shifting our grading and reporting systems as well in order to meet or to match both a proficiency-based system as well as what we are trying to do with classroom teaching. We were working for a while with our student information system, the system where we keep student information and grades and reporting and all of that, which was called Web to School. And we worked with them to create a proficiency-based report card. And then we also were working not just with Burlington, but schools and other networks throughout Chittenden County and throughout the state, really trying to figure out what does this look like when you're doing it authentically and with fidelity in the classroom? What does this mean for students? What does this mean for teachers in their practice? And so, we employed a couple of strategies to help support teachers through graduate level programs, classes, our summer development institute where our teachers get together for a week in the summer and work on this. And so, that was really what really kick-started our shift to proficiencies and what really gave Winuski, I think, a huge kind of lead in working on and developing a system that supported not just proficiency-based learning, but proficiency-based grading and assessment and reporting as well.
Okay. So, moving into more current times, 2018 to 2020.
So, that sort of rolled right into this. If you've seen me before, a couple of you, I've been here, as Lindsay said, and made this presentation, one of the things that we've really tried to do is build on the assets and on the areas where we've had strength as a community and not go down avenues that, that, that hadn't worked for us because the amount of energy that folks bring to something that they can see the success can be significant. So, uh, the second item on there is talking about expos. We developed our system of expos and really grew them a lot. We had a senior project experience that existed for twenty years and that grew into what we're calling our capstones now. The significant demonstrations of learning that students do to show that they can really apply the transferable skills to their learning. Two years ago, we went from having, really we're using two of the GXs, communication and critical thinking, to students being able to showcase all of the areas, including persistence, wellbeing, culture and community, and if I'm gonna name four, I always forget one. The first bullet, implementing GX instruction and capstone assessments, so the capstones are related to what I just said, but also the instruction, having teachers take time to really look at their instruction. The fourth bullet, I know I'm bouncing around a little bit, but the, that has to do with the shared professional learning. We spend a lot of time working together in high school GX teams. These are our equivalent of professional learning communities where teachers are working to develop and flesh out not only what the capstone is, which is something that we're aiming for, that we're targeting, and the skills within that, but being sure that they're being implemented regularly because the transferable skills are with us always, you know, in all the work that they do. Likewise, the middle school adopted the expeditionary learning model. It is, in many ways, it's rooted in a traditional middle school, by traditional, I mean long-established, practice of interdisciplinary learning, but also grows it in the areas of students applying their learning to the community, doing authentic work, having authentic voice. And that too is a process, but teachers have dedicated really significant amount of time to doing that in the middle school and those are connected to our graduate expectations, to the same concepts. We, let's see, we've calibrated and revised the GPs as well, our graduate proficiencies. And Lindsay, do you wanna say a word about advisory?
We also started to, we implemented a full advisory system with a curriculum that helps support not just really building strong relationships with students, but ensuring that we have a kind of system, like a safety net, to ensure that every student has an adult in the building that knows them well, that sees them on a daily basis, that sees them with the same group of students and gets to know them over the course of their time in high school, and also a place where they get to work on the academic advising piece, so figuring out their pathway through high school and figuring out how and where they're going to demonstrate their GPs and GXs and being able to have those kind of conversations. So, that advisory system prior to 2018 did not exist.
And it's my favorite part of the day.
Do you wanna take this one? Do you wanna speak to it?
Yeah, so, right now, we're in the middle of revising our habits of work and habits of learning. Where I think that, and this was evident at the symposium that we participated in yesterday, is many schools have looked at habits of work and learning and where they weren't able to ding students for certain behaviors, this became where they did it and, which was unfortunate. So, we looked at ours and we are piloting as we speak and this is another opportunity for students to weigh in and shape the, the tool.
Sorry.
Oh, she's queuing us up. So, this is an opportunity for students and teachers to partner together with a tool. We've turned it into a coaching tool. So, we believe that if teachers sit down with students and, and students sit down with teachers, then they can look at two areas. One is responsibility and engagement. And under responsibility and engagement, there are three dimensions for each. And we turn them into skills, not compliance language, but what is the skill that either a student has and can recognize and show evidence of and a teacher can say there's evidence too. But they lean into that conversation and then there's some coaching notes to say, here's where you are, here's what you might try to get better at the learning, at some aspect of learning. So, we find these things conditional. So, we're pretty excited about this work and we're excited because we're partnering with students on this work in the development of something that we think matters most. So, here is a video that our students, we have students now participating on our, the middle and high school leadership team, and so they have come at a great time to help us develop and work on these habits of work and learning. Here's a short video, one minute.
You get a bad grade and you wish there was time to change it before the semester ends. Well, now there is, introducing the new coaching tool. This is a tool that allows students and teachers to work collaboratively to keep students on track in class. But wait, how does checking in on your grades improve them? If I'm being too much of a distraction during class, but I am unaware of that, the tool can alert me to change my ways to get good grades. This new amazing tool is in its early stages, so we ask all students and teachers to fully engage and please give feedback. Now, you don't have to worry about it being too late to turn things around. You get it, Ben?
So, we're excited about that work. The next slide will showcase, one of your questions was really about a transcript. So, I joke with my colleagues that when I was hired, nobody ever mentioned that there was not a transcript, that, that that was one thing that we'd have to figure out. So, luckily, we figured it out and we're pretty impressed with the new transcript, which is a digital transcript.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes.
There was no transcript prior to this or was it, was it the traditional?
It was the traditional transcript.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yes. The transcript that we needed is the one that affects our proficiency-based learning.
We had not yet figured out how to produce a proficiency-based transcript that really demonstrated what we value and the goal of why we do grading and assessment, which is to really help students succeed, figure out their achievement, to communicate student achievement.
That's what we, that's a big question.
Yeah.
This right here, awesome.
Yes.
Well, and we want it to be something that can be really empowering to students, that they can plan for the future, that they can set their priorities, that they can know how they're doing and really own their own learning. And, and without the tool in place to, to be able to do that, we've been, it's been a struggle and it's been inauthentic. So, we're moving into a nice phase in terms of how technology is supporting that.
Yeah, so there's a clearer slide we'll get to, but I just wanted to give you a sense of what we've accomplished, but we'll, we'll, there's a bigger slide of this first, but what I would, well, what I would just highlight is a couple things. One, we rewrote our school's profile to better reflect our community. And so, this is seen as a third. So, there's this column, there's the middle, bigger column, which is the transcript itself, and then this column. So, here, we have students that can actually write about themselves in the third person. We wanna contain it to be short, but they get to speak about themselves. So, they can do this through the advisory program with their advisor in drafting and crafting a third-person message about themselves. You would link to the school's profile, you could see the credits and courses that are available here at Winuski. I'm gonna jump over to this side because this side represents our PLP, our personal learning plans, if you will. So, students can actually link really substantial evidence that many of you have seen through an exposition of learning, if you will, something a student has created that they're particularly proud of that actually demonstrates their application of learning in school or in their community. So, they can actually link that to there. The transcript itself is here. So, what you will see, if we could show you a live version and we didn't, we weren't publicizing it on television with student information, we would be able to show you a real-world examples of what this looks like. But basically, these are our graduate expectations. These lines represent how many times a student has been able to try or practice in that area. And where it gets bold is like they're beyond what is career and college-ready. So, we believe that this starts to tell a story about our students. You, you would go down and you would see each one of our graduate expectations below and all of the courses and when they took them. So, we distinguish even CTE or college credit that they have obtained, all of that is there. Now, this whole transcript is the Master Transcript Consortium. What's beautiful about this is that Winuski is the very first high school, is the only high school in the state that all students are graduating with this transcript. So, it's the fully proficient, proficiency-based transcript. What's great about Master Transcript Consortium is that they understand our proficiency-based learning system and they follow that transcript to wherever a student is applying to college. So, where we have some colleges that may not completely understand proficiency-based learning, we, this transcript is followed and guaranteed and understood and unpacked for admissions counselors so that our students are understood and advantaged.
I think something really important to clarify that Jean mentioned, Mastery Transcript Consortium is a group, a nonprofit, that works with schools all across the country. So, Winuski is in a cohort of two hundred and fifty schools that are currently using this transcript. We are not the only Vermont school using it, we're the only Vermont school that is what they call beta testing it, but basically like using it live with our students this year. There are a couple of There are a couple of schools where students have the option to use this transcript. Inisburg Falls is one of those. And then there are a couple of schools where they are currently building this transcript. CVU is one of those, but students aren't actually actively applying with it this year. But they're currently spending some time to build it. So we are in really good company with schools across the nation who are doing proficiency-based learning, who are having students apply to college using this transcript. And the transcript itself can be printed out, but it shows up on admissions desks as a live PDF, where those counselors can access, log in, link, and look at all of the evidence, and really like play around with the transcript and the different views that it offers, basically.
Is there a point of clarification? So this was used for students who applied to colleges this year?
Yes.
And, sorry, go.
Okay.
I have a slot.
I have a lot, I have a lot of questions on this, but I don't know if you want to like continue on, or if we want to get into a question-answer thing.
I mean, I think one component of...
Maybe a little more info about the technology is coming. Yeah.
Well, I think a couple important components. So it would be really intriguing for the school board to invite some of us back here in an executive session to be able to show you the transcript as it exists live with student information from our school. That could be something to really dive into this and spend a little bit more time on it, because we could do a whole focus of learning just on the transcript.
Well, quite frankly, that's what we asked about. So the first part of it, the PBL part, which is always great to get sort of perspective and revisit, because people, we all do change around. But that, this was what was brought to us by our student reps of saying, hey, what's this about? So that's what we, because this came to us in a consent agenda, just in it. There was no conversation about it.
Right.
There was no, nothing about it.
A consent agenda to approve funding for it, or just a hard...
Just to let us know about it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. But there was, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't this. And then when we got concerns about it at a board meeting, that's when the red flags came up of like, wait, what? How, what, what's going on? Hold on.
So that could be a really fun presentation that we did not prepare.
Exactly. And that's why we wrote questions down, because this is, at least for me, I need to speak for myself here, but this was what we had questions about.
Yeah. And so what we were informed is, as a presentation on PBL, so we did that.
Not what we want.
And then we wanted to let you know what else we're working on.
It's lovely to have the history.
Yeah, but I think...
This is what we're, these are the questions.
And I think what we can say is that, you know, we can come back for more, right? We can, we can focus more on something we can better prepare for to help you understand. But yeah, to show live student transcripts is, there's a little bit of tricky...
There's a notebook, there's a notebook.
Yeah.
How absolutely...
So we just want to figure out a way to like help you understand and dig into some models.
Well, I think also, the questions are around, how has this been communicated to students? What was their participation? What, how, how did parents get informed by this? How are colleges being informed by this? You know, what all, and it sounds like, I'm not saying that you didn't think about it, but we have, we don't have any of this information.
Yeah.
We just have information that it's confusing, and they're not sure that colleges are taking it. So that's alarming, if it, if it's going to create barriers. So that's where the big like, what? We need more information.
Yeah.
And so I don't want to stop and leave the discussion. How much more in the presentation, maybe we'll kind of have the discussion of what you just asked.
Okay.
Okay, so let's do that.
Four more slides. What's next? Now one, now one, three more to go.
Three more slides. So technology has definitely been a sticky point in a lot of this work. And when we started in 2012, we said, let's not let what is currently available with technology limit what we want to do and what we know is right to do with our students. And so we've spent a long time building our system of proficiencies with fidelity and creating an authentic system that we really feel like is best for students. And now, we've spent a lot of time digging into what's available technologically to help support our system. So we're really excited to be implementing two new technology systems next year, which is going to be really hard and pretty, a big lift for students, for teachers, and for parents, because it's going to be new for everybody. We're implementing a new student information system, which is Power School. It is very widely used around the state, across the nation. It's the place where student data will live, where our reporting goes, where attendance is taken, things like that. Not super exciting or sexy, but we can build a schedule in there, like, you know, all, all the good stuff that we need. And we are shifting from Canvas, which has been our learning management system, the place where we build courses as teachers, where we put our assignments, where kids submit assignments, and where parents can go in and look at what is going on in a course for a student. We're shifting that to something called Empower Learning, and we're really excited about this. We searched for pretty much two years and talked to many different learning management systems multiple times about our system, what we're trying to do here in Winuski, and what we want, what we're looking for out of a learning management system. And so Empower really has all of the capabilities that Canvas had. Parents can utilize it and log in and see where their students are. Students can log in and be a part of a course. They can access what their assignments are, turn in assignments. But it has a whole other layer that we have been missing here, which is looking at the big picture for students and teachers and parents about student progress and achievement. So this is going to be a six to 12 cohesive view at a student's progress and success throughout their school career here, with all of our GXs, all of our GPs, and evidence of their work in all of that. So it serves not just as a learning management system, but also a type of portfolio that students will then be able to draw from as they create their transcript in whatever year of their high school year they need a transcript. Sometimes it's sophomore year to apply for a scholarship, sometimes it's senior year when they're applying for college. So they'll be able to access that at any time. And simultaneously, teachers will be able to access all of the evidence of a student's growth in a transferable skill, even if it's from their sixth grade or seventh grade year, and they're now in their 10th grade year, even if it's from a teacher for whom they don't often have time to collaborate with. So we'll really be able to see the whole picture of a student and their learning through Empower once we figure out how to use it.
I had said some years ago that whatever we did when we changed our technology system, if we really wanted it to be successful, it had to be as easy and user-friendly as Facebook, which apparently puts me in the over 25 crowd of preferred social media. But it needs to have, it needs to be present, it needs to be live. And, and if we had tried to do that four years ago, which we did, we looked into it, nothing existed at that point. One of the things that we're really excited with Empower is that there's messaging, there's communication, there's reminders. It's much more live, it's, it's much more interactive than anything we have now.
And you asked about during the transcript, some of your questions about who kind of helped make the decision. So there was a team of teachers who helped move into this decision with our curriculum coordinator, some administrators. And then when we got down to our final two choices, we brought on a group of students to meet with the, each company and look at the platform and give their feedback on the platform as well. I'm not familiar with any parent engagement in that decision-making process, but I wanted to make sure you all knew there was student engagement in it.
Two, I think, okay.
Just the final two, yes. Because we went through many iterations of what we would need based on Power, what Power School's going to be able to provide, and our ever-evolving understanding of what Power School is going to be able to provide. Yeah.
Do you guys select the students that get to go, or like, is there like a signup?
For that specific?
Yeah.
Yes, I think they came from culture and community classes. And Mr. Dorfman's been working on equity and liberatory design. So we were thinking about systems, and he wanted to engage some of his students in weighing in on a future system that we were going to look at. So that's how they were selected.
And what was communication to the students about it after it was decided? And then the communication to the parents about how to read this, and were there any...
We're not there yet.
Not there yet. But it's being used, no?
No, no. It's still, it's still, we're still, we've just decided on Empower right now. We haven't really rolled it out.
But didn't you say that there were students going to be using this transcript?
No, helping us in choosing and selecting between a learning management system.
Two different things. The transcript, yes, is being used. This Empower is a learning management system that's coming on. This is kind of like, what's next? What's going on in the future?
Back up board.
Yeah, 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 so...
Sorry, Tori.
But connected in that it's a new technological, exciting thing that we're going to be using to help us with our system. And so your questions around, how was it decided, how was it communicated? I think we're at the way forefront of that with Empower.
I thought we were back to the transcript, so I was thinking about how, how's the transcript been communicated to students, to parents, to, you know, that sort of thing, okay. Okay.
Because students want to be involved, like, be involved in the process?
Always.
Yeah.
Because I, I didn't know this existed at all, or like, there was a...
Yeah, I would say that the only students who know are the students who were involved in the process, as it's so new, and as we figure out our way of how we're going to be introducing it, that that's the next stage in engaging students in the process. And that would be an excellent kind of way to get involved in the next steps.
And I'm going to guess, Eva, that what you're talking about is just access to being able to opt in if you wanted to join. And I think that a lot of the times that we invite students in, it's a connection between a teacher and a student at those initial phases, where that teacher knows they're going to see that student more often and pop them and engage them to come to the meetings, which are not always the most exciting. But I think your point is well-taken about what I'm assuming is your point, which is that you didn't know, and maybe you would have liked to have known and been able to say, I'd be interested and would like to be considered for that. So I think that's good feedback for us, thank you. Is, am I right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Just looking for more mating, maintaining and growing of the work that we're currently doing as we move, I want to move forward and to really open it up for questions. Did you have a specific point you wanted to add to this slide?
No.
No, we're good, yeah.
And...
Yeah. So these are just next steps in terms of where we're, where we're moving, with completing more calibration of the GPs and implementation of revised ones, developing performance indicators, back to that clear transparency of what's expected for learning, reassessing the roles of the reading and math skills tests as graduation requirements, that is also coming into consideration.
Yeah, so these pieces are about continuing to implement these strategies into the actual teaching practices versus being on documents. We've developed a lot of the background. The integrating of them is going to, is what's going to take some time. The performance indicators are like, how do we know that you belong in this step on the various progressions? You know, I mean, if you, Tori's nodding her head, I think you know what performance indicators are. They're the more specific details of what a student can show specifically versus some of the more overarching titles we might have. And then the reading and math, let's... Yeah, so this is really about embedding it into the, the teaching.
All right, I'm going to skip a slide based on time, go to questions.
I think because where most of our questions are going to lie is here. We can go here with the full transcript, and then this is the college and university slide.
These are just a list of the, this is, the colleges and universities students have applied for this year.
Using the master transcript.
Yeah, so this is where we've sent it and where it's been received, the master transcript.
So you use the transcript last year as well?
No.
No, this is the first year. So you won't know if this changes acceptance rates until...
And we won't know if that is the factor, or if there's another factor either, but yes.
Sure, comment. Because I work at UBM, I sometimes get comments from people. And the Vice President of Enrollment Management came up to me and called me up. And I shared this with Sean, so you might have already heard, but I want to share this with the board. She goes, you know, the dean of the missions at Columbia University called me. And she goes like, I need to know about this school called Winuski. Is it a like, a, is it a new charter school, is it a new private school that just popped up in Vermont? Like, what is it? We've got, we've got a couple students that were really interested, but we don't understand the transcript a little bit. But they remember Winuski so much that they thought, gave the courtesy call to the enrollment management, VP of Enrollment Management at Vermont to like, say like what it is. So in many ways, I think, to get to point to Tori's part is that we, and I do have a question for the students about the earlier part of the conversation, is that I think you have done a lot on proficiency-based, and we really understand the proficiency base, and you have put a lot of the infrastructure in place to make it work. The concerns that Tori and I, and I think the rest of the school board has with the students and all that and stuff, that, and, and some of our focus groups that we even did, is the communication aspect that goes out to parents and students. Like, we can be advocates, strong advocates for proficiency-based education. What you have presented here can be very strong. But the thing in the long run is, is how do you interpret this so that the parents can also be advocates, so students can be advocates? And one of the things that, what I enjoy about Eva's question is about, is that like, it's a product of your system actually working well, and if you think about culture and community and being your own advocates and wanting to be part of the community. That's why she's asking, and that's why you have to also sign and change the model in many ways of thinking like, how do we get more students involved? Because you just empower, you taught students to be empowered, to be part of the education. And so, you know, it's a different model, and I see the changes all the time. And I think, and I'm going to open up to Tori to kind of ask those questions. How are we doing the communications, and how are the students involved? Because the transcript is amazing, but it's only amazing if people can actually interpret it.
And understand it.
And understand it.
Sophia and Eva have raised questions about this consistently. And I think I'm interested if you are so inclined to raise the questions about it and concerns that you have raised, certainly since these conversations, since the conversations began. Also, having served for many years on the College Admissions Committee, wondered if you actually brought admissions folks here to look at this thing, to see how it would be received. And, and, and whether or not, I mean, so you have the colleges and universities that students apply this year. So what if, what if there's someone that says, I don't know what this is, you know? And that, I mean, can you imagine the possibility of a student being placed at a disadvantage because of this? And then my final question is, why not allow it to be optional?
Those are good questions. I would say that from, we have partnered with many admissions counselors in the state of Vermont. Matter of fact, they've reached out to us and given us great feedback on it. But also, like I said, what we have is a great partner with Master Transcript Consortium, and these transcripts are literally followed. Someone is calling up and, and, you know, coaching someone on interpreting this, this transcript. So it's, we have no evidence of, you know, once they understand, and it's, it, I would think there would be a danger if we just sent it and thought, okay, they'll figure it out, they'll interpret, they're smart people, right? We're not making that assumption. This transcript is followed by an individual. And we're lucky that in Vermont, we're small enough where our admissions counselors might know us, and they call us directly, right? Like, but it's, but that's just an advance of the system, like, this is being followed, so...
By who, within the consortium?
Yeah.
Yes. Within each of these colleges, each of the...
Wherever our students apply to.
There's someone who's helping it make, interpret the transcript.
Yeah, we've, we've bought into the Master Transcript Consortium, and they, not, not these individual colleges, ensure that wherever our students have applied, that transcript is followed. That there's a strong advocate behind every transcript, which would not be true in the old system. We would hope for the best to say, these are the courses they took, these are the grades they took, which communicates something, but it's, it doesn't communicate what we want and value as a community.
And then from that person following it, are you getting feedback again?
Absolutely.
It's a two-way street.
Yeah, like, so we're getting like, we, you know, it's been tweaked and improved, and, and, and if it's not good enough, we're making it better. And so we've, we've been able to do a real, we've spent a lot of time on this. And I, I regret, I am a big student voice person, but I'm going to tell you, I was panicking in the middle. You, you've watched other principals resign because of transcripts. I realized that, oh, we're graduating our first class in a proficiency-based learning system, and we don't have a transcript that reflects that system. And so sometimes there's urgency and trust that needs to be put into, to us as educators to make that decision. Like, and, but what I love about this is that our students in advisory are influencing and shaping and understanding this... Like, and, but what I love about this is that our students in advisory are influencing and shaping and understanding this transcript themselves.
So the transcript is being communicated to the students?
Yes.
And they're?
Well, I think what's important to communicate because it wouldn't have been communicated to Eva or Sophia for two different reasons, is that it's been communicated to all students who are applying to college this year and all students who are in their fourth year at Winuski. So, sorry, that's just my son. I'll be right there, bud. So in the senior advisories, that's where we have done many, many sessions, presentations, this is what it looks like. We also worked with two students who had November first deadlines for college applications, very personally to get theirs transcript ready to go and submitted. And then they gave us permission to use their transcript as the example for the rest of the students who would be creating that transcript. Now, because Eva is a junior and at BTC and because Sophia is at early college, neither of them are in advisory and so it's been communicated differently to Sophia because of her early college and not communicated to anyone who is a junior or lower.
Even though it's still affecting the ninth, 10th and 11th graders?
Correct.
Right, this is still their transcript also?
Yeah.
Okay, but that hasn't been?
It has not yet, and yet is the operative word.
Yeah, okay.
We really wanted to focus on the ones applying this year.
And what about senior parents?
Yeah. That's a great question.
I mean, I had to use the transcript for something that I was applying for.
What type of a thing was it?
A study abroad.
Yeah.
Yes. A study abroad program.
I needed, I needed a transcript and like, a lot of my work, I felt like, like the math especially, like they just put Math Lab on there. And there wasn't, they, I don't know, it doesn't say what I did exactly in math, I was kind of concerned about that.
But this transcript isn't the one that you used for your application?
No, I think it was the same one.
Your master.
Yes, the new one, pretty sure. Wasn't there like a website that you had to enter?
To submit use of others, that's okay.
Yeah, you know, but it, it, it got, right, because you're going to Japan, right? Like, I want to make sure which Asian country that was with Japan. So that got you what you needed, right?
Yeah.
But I think to get to Eva's point here is that like there was a lot of anxiety that is going on. And I don't want to get us into the means or the process here, but it's really taking deep thought into this communication plan and how are we communicating to all? Because we also know in theory about college going rates is that the earlier that a student is thinking about college, right, the better. And so if transcripts are the way of kind of commuting, helping people guide to their college, it shouldn't just be done to the seniors. It should be going down all the way to like the, I can't do my math, seventh, eighth, ninth graders, all the way down, first years all the way up. You know, and even, and it's great to hear that you're actually building a system that is going to integrate that path from sixth grade onward to really start thinking about this pathway of career. But I think that's the biggest concern of the board, like, these are like the kind of topics that should be written in the newsletter. And, and other, and parent, and I know Tori's a parent and that, this is one of your concerns.
Well, I think also, big picture, proficiency-based learning, the only time it's gone down in Maine is when we move too fast and we don't communicate well. Because the teaching and the learning is not the question. It's, it's awesome.
Yeah.
I think that there was some questions around some progressions and if they're being capped at a certain age level. You're only in eighth grade, so you can only learn this much.
Especially since there's a continuum from sixth to 12th grade, that there, I think there was an experience Eva that you were saying that you, that they possibly felt like they got capped because of their grade. So that's a barrier and that's concerning, but that's something that can be worked out. Hopefully through, you know, through this great communication system.
That's something that I would say the middle high school leadership team, which is Lindsay, me and some other teachers, as well as Kate and Jean, are aware of and are going to need to be addressing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because that is a misconception in how proficiency works.
Sure, it could be a misconception or just different practice, right? The other, but the big piece of it is, is when we change how we're communicating to our parents in the community and colleges, if it moves too fast without really good communication, people get scared. Because this is, this is high school and they're about to launch into their adult world. And I think also the other piece that was brought up from the students was that honors has been taken away. Like there's no more, potentially there's no more ability to earn honor society or those types of things that most students have been trained to reach for because it mattered. And now it sounds like it might have been taken away for this year with the new transcript and that. So, communication is, is what we're, and that's where our role as stakeholders is like to be, you know, is to be representing in the community. Our job is to communicate it out too, so that when parents are terrified or don't know or are still questioning even proficiency-based learning and teaching and how is that different from A, B, C, D, I'm still, you know, very invested in that, how do we have the information to even be able to communicate that back out?
So I'd like to contextualize or combine two things. Margaret asked the question of why, why isn't it opt-in, why isn't it optional? And you're asking some questions about, about the implementation here and the communication. So as a point of context, we in Winuski, we hope with your blessing, certainly with Sean's leadership and through the system, with the Nellie May grant all the way through, we have, I think, more than almost any other school district in Vermont, have taken seriously the promise of proficiency to empower students and to help them own their learning and to reflect what they've really learned, reflect something that's true and genuine. Having integrity around that system means that we have had some challenges that can feel bigger than in some other schools. If we had simply taken our transcript and said, oh, well, instead of A, B, C, D, we're now going to do four, three, two, one, which is what almost I think all school, a vast majority of schools have done, that would not have harnessed the transformative potential of bothering to do this. It would have just been requiring kids to learn a new system. It would have been easier, it would have been more familiar. We have taken on a larger challenge and as part of that challenge, as part of that desire to be authentic, to get to the spirit of what was behind it, we believe we're investing in the long term in students being, you know, owning their learning and owning what goes on here. What that does mean is that for us, the transition has been harder than just saying to parents, oh, well, or kids being able to say, well, four, that's kind of like an A. You're right, we don't have that anymore and so that has been more complicated. But to Margaret's question about why have we not made it optional? Because we had a very strong belief that if we said, well, here's the traditional that we're kind of comfortable with and here's something that's the new proficiency thing, that we would have, teachers as well as students would, it would have been really easy to fall into heaping with what looked more traditional as opposed to moving the whole system. How do we teach? How do kids own their learning? We thought if we, if we give it out, people are going to be flowing to that out. Now, Tori, you're right that it hasn't been perfect in terms of the communication. I just wanted to contextualize a little bit why it might look and feel different here with good intent behind it, but it, but it did mean we gave ourselves a higher, a higher hill's climb.
And what you came up with, and that's not what I'm questioning, it is the communication piece.
Yeah.
Like, well, how has this been communicated and how is it going to impact our students? Right, in this, in this new year of implementing something that a lot of us don't have language for or even understanding about.
And, and I'm going to just piggyback on what Tori's, that's all right, and the level of like, there is no doubt, I think every member on the board here understands and are like full gun on proficiency-based education. Like I had a whole conversation with TJ Donovan, the Attorney General, who was sitting next to me for a dinner event, and talking about how much for, and he goes, yes, that is the education that we need, that's why Vermont's going to move up. So they implemented, and I want to give again kudos to all the great work that you've done on the proficiency. I'm seeing it in their voice, of our student voices being like, hey, where are we in this, right? And that's, once again, great testament to the system. But if, the very first question was how does the school board help you out with the, you know, on this and how, share the joys? And the first question says the communication outward. And we can't communicate outward on the transcripts and all this and help students, because ownership, totally agree. I send that message with all the students that I've mentored, all that, right? How are, how can we be a better help so that we can do that if we don't know what's the playbook essentially for us to talk about it? You did a wonderful presentation, I think we want to see it, but I think there's a level of like, how do we have a more comprehensive communication? And this is part of that iterative process where, we know that all the pinpoints, and you all have done amazing on that iterative and you've taught us the continuous improvement. I think the next level of improvement for us is really the communication aspect of it. So, and that's right.
And what about your, your comments and questions?
Yeah, as a freshman, I would have liked, like knowing all my rights and like what I, what I can do. Because it's like, I don't know how the transcript looks like for an example or what I like, I don't, I don't know how to word it. If I know what the transcripts look like, it looks like, I would think about it ahead of time, like how I'm going to fill it up. Yeah, like it gives a student almost like a kind of motivation, like this is what my college will get, I want those bars to fill up. So, I don't know, I think, that's my motivation for me.
No, and I think that's a very, I mean, one of the talked about, one of the things that we've talked about with our students is that like, we know that the top notch students do really well and they're self-motivated. It's that other, some of the other students that we worry about that aren't as motivated, that you've talked about. And in some ways, I know that it was important to communicate to the seniors, but it was probably more important to first communicate to the ninth graders and then the 10th graders out there so that they got the pathway at the level.
Like, it should be all planned out. And also like I talked with Mr. Bertheum before coming here, is like, when students think proficient, they think proficiency-based grading is like you can go at your own pace, but teenagers don't want to work very fast. So they, like, when you let them set the bar for themselves, they might not set it up high enough if they lack motivation. So I think there should be like a, like a bar set first, like a minimum, a minimum. And then from there you can work by yourself, that's what I think.
So I want to give you a moment, Sophie.
I agree on what Eva said and I think, I think it was, it would be a good idea to start from the beginning and also do it for eighth graders so they know and they can also like plan out what they're doing. Because I think some classes that I was hoping to do wouldn't fit in my schedule and I just couldn't get the right GPs for them, so now I have to get it in college, which sometimes doesn't work because, because some people in high school can't get to a nine in one year. They have to work several semesters. And what's lucky for me is that I can get it up to a nine because of the college classes. So I just am worried about seniors right now that don't have the right GP level.
I feel like an answer right here, but one of, one of the questions that I think is posed kind of with, one of the opportunities to explain within this is what's in place now, right? So I think the biggest change that we have is a new co-principal focused on the high school. And Jean has been relentless in making sure this has moved forward on a timeline that it was never moved forward in the past. So I think there was some alarm in the system, some awareness, but when Jean came on, he said, this, this is big, we are going to move on this. We have Luke Dorfman, who has a role in fellowship, who was able to pour a huge amount of his time into the fall in helping us dig up this transcript, the mastery transcript. Otherwise, we would have been retooling web to school and we had, that would have been hard, awful, probably self-defeating work. But Luke, and we would have done it, but again, having that capacity helped that happen. You, you folks brought on Emily Hecker as a communications specialist and she's really working on getting her head around this because she's a better, more clear communicator than I am and I'm okay, but she's, she's on point. And, and I think that's going to be an important piece of it. And then the other investment that, that you guys made, I don't know if you directly chose it, but the state funding that allowed us to get a second high school guidance counselor. And that has been also transformative and crucial. We had one counselor, you know, in a high need school who was responsible for all of this, all this work without a directive of guidance and so forth, who was inundated and didn't have the administrative push to help her, you know, to provide her what she needed to do this reporting. And now we have another counselor, so not only do we have a counselor focused on ninth and 10th graders and helping them understand this, and that's Amy Loomis, Heidi McLaughlin, who's doing, who has our juniors and seniors, is able to dedicate more time to this. So what that allowed in the fall was not only we had some on hand, all hands on deck moments where anybody who had a moment to spare was pitching in with this, but also it's given Heidi the time to speak directly to the students. So I'm thinking about where are we now and how are we moving forward? And I think we have the capacity that we need to do this and the intent to do it. And I think it's, it's great to get feedback from you folks too about what would you like to see, what do you need? How can we deploy our, you know, our resources best? And I would just add that, you know, it's, it's, we're hearing that communication can always be better and it's vital. It's, we get that. I'm just going to elaborate, like the timeliness and the, and the urgency of getting something in place shortchange the ability to start with, with eighth graders or middle schoolers. So that's, that is just the reality of the situation. We will move forward and do better. We will now within power make the, the learning process more transparent for parents, for students. I mean, we have, we're still doing paper proficiency trackers, right? Like it's just, it's really like needed some updating, so a lot of system changes. And in order to do this transcript, we had to start merging student management systems with data to like communicate and code and like, I mean, my office was sometimes a war zone where people were just getting this work done. And, and I, you know, and it shortchanges that critical and important opportunity to communicate effectively with people about this change. I, I don't, I'm not missing that message, but I, I have to, I want to make sure that you appreciate that this team and many others stepped up to the plate where there was some absence of some systems. And quite honestly, the system changes is going to have a ripple effect. It's going to have a ripple effect because we're going to move away from other inequitable systems that are in place that really segregated our students from each other and prioritized one student's learning over another. So I want to make sure that we are, we're committed and we're hardworking on this. And, and I just wish I had, we had the human capacity to be able to communicate effectively, do the work and like, and, and, and be sane and have a life. Like, it's just the reality and I can't, I don't know how to amend that, I don't know how to do it retroactively. But I hear you, we will get better. I sat down with Emily Hecker today and we like, we talked about proficiency-based learning. We said, we're, we're preparing family forums so that we can meet with the varying communities and use our liaisons to communicate with everybody. So we've already got those plans in the work. We just needed to get back the hurdle of early college admission. Like, those things were just timelines that were, that we faced and we needed to accept and say, okay, we're not going to be able to communicate and do it all well. But we did, we did a lot well and we're going to be committed to doing it even better. Yeah.
I hope and sure that we can work with you guys because I think what's, what's lacking in our student rep is that we don't really have that much to share about like important things like this. And keeping the board updated all the time will just like let us have better communication. And also like we can help with communicating to parents and students so we can just have such a better communication.
Like, if you guys are making like new changes, like the E, E-powering, right? Empowering, yeah. Like I wish we knew about that because we're on the board, we really want to hope, we really want to make a change. And, but it feels like it's really almost impossible because we're not here for, she's not here the whole day, I'm not here for half a day. And then when we come, we try to like communicate, but there, we don't really know what's going on. Like, I don't know if there are any changes being made, who I can talk to. So like change, like small things like that, that like, you guys are starting a huge project, so. And you know, you know I like giving my feedback.
It's more important than your feedback, it's your partnership, it's you sitting down at the table with us and having the right conversations.
Right.
Because we can get feedback, but it's like, it's, if we're going to do it, we're going to do it together, right? And I think that there's rich opportunities, you know, yes, National Honor Society, we have a great opportunity to reimagine. to reimagine a new celebratory process where we highlight and educate our community about our GXs. And imagine instead of stools, we have GX pins that really talk about creativity and persistence. You know, those are the narratives we really wanna embrace. Um, you know, when I look at National Honor Society, and when I look at the literature of National Honor Society, it's all about the torch and the flame. It's about how we hold that flame so that we see a path forward, but so that others can see a path forward too. It's how do we share that education? And that's really important, and I think that's the promise that we have in the new work and systems that we now can imagine and create. And we can get ourselves away from the past. Lindsay and I spent so much time yesterday listening to schools that had one foot in the old system and another foot in the new system. And I'm gonna tell you that they felt very stuck, they had two, two feet in the mud and not figuring out how to make it forward. That's what I heard, anyway.
I mean, they're kind of contradicting slightly.
But, um.
The, the two schools having?
Yeah, the purpose of the, but I, I hear you right to saying, but like, the thing that students are worried about is there are, there are like, resources out there that we, we almost feel like we're missing on, like, for example, um, if you're, I, I was filling out an application for something like today, and th- there was a page on, like, achievements, I had to put all my achievements on there, and I fe- and like, and then they had examples like National Honor Society, like, all the things that use GPAs and stuff like that. So I was thinking, oh, well, I can't put those things that they are familiar with. And I feel like we should come up with other ways to like, replace those in our school system and like, celebrate the learning. Because everyone's working at their own pace and their own projects, so how can we like, make something that celebrates the work like universally in our school, something like that.
I think, I.
I think what you're speaking to too is, and, and also kind of, I'm connected to what our concerns, when you kind of brought this up to us, is that, is that bridge. You know, like, bridging over, not necessarily asking to be, you know, you have your feet stuck in the old and the new, but just to be able to bridge it so that things that have been, especially for those who are at the end of the system, and then all of a sudden, it feels like, in hearing, it feels like the rug's being pulled out, not because we think that's a great model, but because there are still organizations that are still invested in that type of communication. And that communication means something to those people who are making decisions about whether our students can or cannot do something, even if it's not as relevant and meaningful as this system. But there's, but just having that bridge, um, is what I feel like is really missing here. I think it is brilliant that we are moving so far ahead and Winuski's moving ahead. We are still run by taxpayers who have their students in this building, and they need to know what's going on in their college, their kids' education. And that's not always, you know, especially this massive change. So, again, I get that there are timelines and everything's hard, you know, I totally get that crunch inside schools. It's super important to have a bridge.
And I think, I think the other takeaway in all this is that, um, if you look at it, at the strengths and the assets that you do have so that you don't feel like you have to face the timelines on your own. I, I, maybe I'm bragging about this board, but this is a fairly heavily educated board that is really, um, supportive. And, and want to hear about your vision and share as with the word, like you said, partnership. Is a true partnership so that you don't always have to feel like you have the burden on that, right? The vision that you just explained about the excitement of the honors, what you just did was amazing, but I think it was the first time that we all heard that kind of vision. Without us having a sense of that vision, makes it harder for us to be that partnership, to help the people to bridge these kind of systems overall. And I guess that's what I think the board and the students are kinda saying, like, we, we recognize, like, I think as a board, we recognize all the great things that you all do. I, and, and, and once again, I, if you ask me, I'm always worried if I drank the Kool-Aid. And so like, I'm talking to like, the dean of the College of Education in Vermont, talking to the admissions director at UVM, the VP, all those folks, and like, have I drunk the Kool-Aid? Right? And, and there's no evidence of that. But I'm also worried about how do the community members actually understand that they're, we're using our taxpayers' money in a way that has, and I, and I really encourage you to not take away that we're kinda judging on what was done, it's past, it's past, we know that, but to also look at the asset that you have and the students that you have produced, the school board that you have that is willing to be some of that voice, that external communication outward. I mean, and, and I'll guarantee you, if you help us like, see that vision, I mean, I know I'm doing the budget community talk on like, one Tuesday. Having your excitement, having your passion and being able to relay that makes my job easier to help pass that budget, so. Um, I, I'm.
Did y'all have more?
Any more questions or anything, I don't wanna cut it off.
I'm stuck on the National Honor Society, I really am. And, and because the nation, that, the, the meaning of that thing varies among populations. And there, I, I, I can't even imagine a universe where a GX pin is going to have the same meaning as being a member of the National Honor Society. That's gonna be a huge shift, and I don't know how, I don't know how long it will take, I don't know how long it would take me to get there. But I don't know how long it will take students to, how you undo the meaning of the National Honor Society, in a, to, to students in a way that makes whatever it is that's gonna come from this an equivalent to that, as long as the National Honor Society exists, right? So that, that, yeah, that. And, and for me, there's an irony here, I mean, given the way, you know, this is, there's no question, but, you know, this is forward, you know, sort of looking toward a future, but it, it, it's ironic, I mean, I have questions about it, and I'm only a year old on this thing, so it seems really, maybe it wasn't fast, but it seems so. It feels so to me, that this has come through, that there has not been, not a, no bridge, but there's not been a kind of easy transition from system A into this system. And so this is the, you know, their confusion is the, is the consequence of that. But, you know, sort of given, given some of what we know, the perceptions of, of our school district are, I just, there's, there's some, there's a, a disconnect, right? You, you know, because when, you know, we talked about Winuski and a new system, but more often than not, that's not what, that's not what we hear, you know. Oh, Winuski, blah, it's Winuski, right? And so there's something about this kind of great leap forward when, when I think there are other kinds of movements that will, that will bring us to a, 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 a so, a place that makes sense in ways that, and I'm, I'm cer- I'm, I'm not arguing against this at all, but I, it, it, it's, it, it's hard, it's hard, it's, this is hard to wrap. Not the proficiency-based learning, but the, the tr- the actual thing itself. I have to really, I, I want to, I can't wait to see the presentation, but just even thinking about what goes away, you know, to listen to Hiva's, like, okay, the applications are gonna say, what's your GPA, what organiza- what are your organization, blah, blah, blah. And so that, a- as long as the National Honor Society means something, then some alternative is going to have to be created to have those students who would be in the National Honor Society say, I'm not, and this is why, right? I'm not, I would be, I should be, and this is, and this is why.
So is it true that they no longer can be, there's no longer a National Honor Society, or any of the stools are gonna be at graduation? We're not doing that anymore?
Yeah, 'cause it's, it's dependent on a GPA.
And did that get asked for, like, student opinions on that? I mean, it's such, we are still, and I appreciate you voicing the investment of the story that our society still has, because it matters. And, and I'm, I, I'm certainly concerned about, again, my concern is about barriers to our students. I absolutely support the moving forward piece. But if we're letting go of things that matter to students who are on the cusp of graduating, that could, could have those achievements that mean something to other organizations, and they don't have that, has that been thought about, and what barriers have we put up for them?
We, we have thought about that, we've, we've actually thought about like, so we, our, our proficiency-based learning system and our eleven-point system doesn't allow us to calculate the GPA, that it was calculated based on the letter grade. So, we have, uh, we have thought hard about when is a GPA needed, and, because we wanna advantage our students. So, um, we, we have guaranteed that that can happen.
That sounded like damage, you said advantage, right?
Advantage.
He said advantage, yeah.
Did you hear damage?
No, he heard.
But I know you didn't say that.
Yeah, no.
Um, so it doesn't get in my own head, and it could have come out that way, but, no, we wanna, we have ensured that that does not happen. So, we don't give out GPAs, but if somebody, if a student was to need one, we have devised a way in which we could give that, uh, GPA.
Right, 'cause you, we, there's, there's conversion scales all over the place now, with one point four, I mean, but y'all might be a little different.
Yeah, but it's, remember, everyone else is doing decaying averages, or like, you know, power law, like, these are complicated and convoluted ways, but we have figured out a way to, even with our freshmen or sophomore that are applying for some kind of enrichment opportunity or scholarship to participate in something, and, and, uh, the, the, you know, there are many systems that are, are keeping up with the change that Vermont has, right? We've been able to calculate that in a very consistent way, when needed, but we're not giving it out generally, speaking.
So, for those who need or want, who are still invested in the system, the National Honor Society still exists in our world, can they still have that achievement?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay, because this was actually, some of this was new information to me. Um, because last year, there had been some discussion about, do we have to get rid of the National Honor Society? And I did a little research, and it said GPA or whatever your community values as an equivalent. My recollection is Lindsay looked it up, and we saw that, so this was new information to me that it had to be a GPA. I guess, we, we need to look at it, I don't know what that system is gonna be, I mean, it's, it was a question I don't have an answer for, because I'm not, I, I haven't wrapped my head around it, I guess we could do it, um, with that being said.
Without a GPA, maybe?
Maybe, I, but I don't know.
I think the honor of the students and where we are, I just, it just feels empty a little bit, I get where you're going, I, I totally get it, I think, we all kinda, we all get it. And yet, there's still a society, you know, there's still that achievement, and I think, and I don't know if this was a point you were making, Margaret, but I, this is what I, how I interpreted, how it landed on me, was as our school, and we still have, we are moving towards a more positive narrative in, in those that are like, within Chittenden County and within Vermont of being a rigorous school. It still needs some work, not on our part, except to communicate out.
Well, I think on our part too.
Well, sure, well, we need to communicate, I, I'm, I'm talking like, as a system of being able to celebrate how far we've come as a system, and, and that this is a relevant place to be educated, and, and more than just relevant, it's an awesome place to be educated. When we pull these rugs out, because parents are sometimes more invested in these little achievements than sometimes the students, it is important, and if you can't achieve that in this system, but you can go achieve that in another system, and it matters, then they're going to the other system. And I think that what also needs to be recognized, and I've said it before and I will say it again, is that our school is still a somewhat segregated school. Families move out to go to other systems based on economic status and the ability to be mobile. We know we lose that pop- some populations in that. We've also lost, um, new families who've come to the United States who have been invested in the old system too, because it made sense. So it's not just people in our own country that are invested in this old system of communicating who's doing well and who's not doing well, even if it's not equitable, it's still a story that people are invested in. And they move to that because they want their students and their children to achieve in the way that the story's been told. So we're, we are in this funky little place, but I don't want a loss because we are moving to something that is more equitable and that's honorable and that's valuable too. But where, how do we not take something away? That's what I wanna leave on, but I appreciate all the work and the vision and where we're going, let's just not have to pull the rug out too.
Our time is getting, I really appreciate y'all staying as long for part of this discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for being here.
Yeah, I, I, and once again, I hope the takeaway is that like, you know, once again, there's a great appreciation for what you're doing, but like, there's also just deeper, I hope you're listening to the feedback to make those tweaks of, in terms of continuous improvement. It kind of mindset, I think that's what we all have. And also, um, note that you're not in alone, it's the school board and the students that want to be part of helping and telling the narrative. Public comment? No one's here. Consent, consent agenda? Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I don't have the second, any discussions that we wanna talk about, about the?
There were some great celebrations in it. Uh, there was like, the fourth grade who's doing this energy sustainability, uh, project-based learning, that sounded awesome, and they were working with.
True, true, true art, Tru, Tru Collins and Reart.
Yeah, um, it sounded like a really great investment, um, that might even benefit our school, which would be cool. Um, I also saw the most important class we ever had, which was the business class, um, in our school, that was exciting. And I love the fact that, um, the JFK teachers are learning phrases in six other countries, so that they can also celebrate and say hello to families and students in elementary school in other languages, that was exciting. Okay, those are my celebrations.
I know that this isn't in the celebration, but I also wanted to acknowledge that he was, he did get accepted to a study abroad in Japan, and she's going to Japan and, 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 oh, I guess the, she's going to Ja- oh, oh, do I have a? I've lost control of the meeting. Do I have, um, a motion to accept, or, where did that, um, vote, what's the vote?
You can like, you can hear. To accept the consent.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 I think we've accepted the consent agenda, executive limitations? The budget? Audit? Do I have any discussion? The audit?
But anything we should know about the audit?
Um, I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of words, as Alex said earlier, it's very wordy. Um, generally, we've talked about the fund balance that was brought forward this year. Um, and in the report, there were no additional findings or material weaknesses. Um, so I think it's a very comprehensive audit, and I'm proud of the work that the office does for this. Um, so unless anyone had any specific questions on any part of it, I think it's, um, done fairly and ready to be accepted.
Yeah, do you have a motion to accept the audit?
So moved.
Um, all in favor? Aye. Anybody not in favor? Next one on the, is the, um, financial planning and budgeting, review of the twenty, fiscal year twenty-one budget cycle?
I can talk a little bit about it if you'd like me to.
Yes.
Um, I think this is put on the agenda just as a reflection of the way the process, the budget worked this year. Um, and it's kind of a time for you folks to give us feedback, if you'd like to see something different in the future, what worked well, what you'd like to see improved, or any other feedback that you might have on the process this year.
Like right now?
Um, if you want to, or you can table it, I mean, it's certainly up to you.
Conversations about it, I mean, comments.
Are you just gonna do the agenda?
No.
Okay. I can't find the agenda in here.
I have the agenda.
Okay, good, 'cause I'm trying to find, there's so many, uh, meeting notes, especially if I can. Okay. Um, can we do feedback next time?
I can table.
On the budget, yeah, can we table it?
You can table.
No, you can table it, okay.
So, do I need to make a motion to table?
There was no action needed on that, it was mostly just discussion from your folks, if you wanted to bring it back next month, you can certainly put it on your agenda again.
Okay, let's do that.
Let's do that, okay.
The, um, for accountability of the superintendent, the board. The, um, for accountability of the superintendent, the board, um,
Yes.
monitoring report, do we have questions? Or?
No, it was very straightforward, I found. Interpretations.
Do I have a motion?
Evidence.
Who, sorry?
Just I, I would say one thing in three, in three two point two one. The word give, giving instructions to people who report record of the superintendent. I would agree with compliance, but I think at times we've walked the line and tonight being a time where we walk the line about giving instructions to people who report to the president or to the superintendent.
And evidence? Do we need to put that in evidence?
I don't think so, just a note.
The, but what you're saying is that you feel like the board has given direct.
No, I think we're in compliance. I just think we've been walking the line over different times.
Over the budget meetings?
Just in general.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I made the motion, yeah.
Okay, we're at eight, covered in spotty, um, student report to the board.
Um, I have an, an exciting opportunity to talk about. So, do you guys know Ms. Parkett?
Yes.
All right. So Ms. Parkett is in charge of this thing called like the Hamilton. It's not called the Hamilton, but anyways, we go, she collected a group of students. So it was, the application was open to all high schoolers. And it was basically an application to go see Hamilton in Broadway. And so we were, they picked out thirty-two students. And basically, our ticket to go see Hamilton is go to this after-school program twice a week and learn about history. And we have to make a project to turn something like in a historical event into something modern like they did with Hamilton. Like basically, they took history and made it into songs. And we would go to Broadway and get a private show of Hamilton and meet with, and meet and interact with the past. And so what she wanted me to talk about was, was fundraising for the field trip. It will be, the cost is nine thousand ninety-three dollars for all the students to go. So she's working some stuff out, but she just wanted me to let you guys be, to let you know, be aware about it. If you guys know any like organizations that can help us fundraise and get all the students down there that would be great and helpful for our field trip.
Awesome, that's exciting.
I think it's a good like learning opportunity and it's really fun. And maybe kids will learn more about history through this. I think it's a really exciting way to learn. So.
Do, do you want to say that?
Um, okay. Um, so you know, today is the deadline for the VSAC scholarships. And during my process throughout this scholarship is, I might have forgot about it until I was reminded by Upper Bound. So I'm very happy that they help us. But I am very nervous about like people that don't have this opportunity for them to be reminded by it. So like, because like I talked to many of the other seniors and they were, they didn't know about it. No, they were, they knew about it, but then they didn't really do it because they weren't focused or reminded about it. And I.
Support it?
Yeah, they weren't supported, supported like from Upper Bound. And so I just hope that in the future there is like a day where they can have scholarships to, to help seniors. Yeah, workshop. Because they did it for Upper Bound, but.
So now all students have access to Upper Bound?
Yes. You have to be, you have to meet certain criterias to be in Upper Bound and be accepted. A lot of students, I mean, not a lot, but there are students who are rejected that would like to be in Upper Bound. Unfortunately, they can't have any, everybody in Upper Bound because they have like cer- certain amount of money that they can spend on students. I think what Sophia was like talking about is like, we have a lot of other students who are underserved. Like they don't have enough resource, I mean, there are, but in school, it would be nice if there was something in school like during TA where they could go to the library, for example, or a classroom and have some students there to help them with filling out like application and scholarships, like really important things.
Isn't there an advisory council, like a student advisory?
Yeah, but they, they're like all throughout the grades, so they don't just focus on seniors.
But I wonder if it would be an issue place to take that information and see, like for the senior advisories to be able to make sure that there are deadlines that students have access to.
I think in advisory, um, they cover, I'm not, I'm not in advisory, but last year when I was there, all they, all we did in advisory was have these circles. And circle is not bad necessarily because they use that time to, I don't remember anything we talked about in circle because I didn't, okay. I didn't think it, like I related to a lot of things. So maybe I need to connect with some teachers to tell them about this.
I think half days should be used for scholarships, especially like at the end of the semester, like not in the beginning.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that we should also help with comment app because there are some things that are confusing, especially with ELL students and they don't know how to like get through it. Another thing that I wanted to talk about is CCV and like college in the future is that basic classes that they offer, like physics, chemistry. I kind of wish I had like a background on it, like other students that I have talked to from other schools. And I think that because we don't have these basic classes, I think that in the future they won't be able to take higher classes. Like if I was in English, I mean, if I was in physics, some of the requirements would be taking calculus. But some of us at this school can't, don't usually go up to calculus because they do the bare minimum, which is IMP two. So they just miss out on IMP three, pre-calculus, and then calculus. So if someone wanted to do physics in the future or they wanted to take class, they wouldn't be, they would be, they would go in the class, maybe. But they will struggle a lot more. And not having these beginner classes will also like take away from them learning about, not being introduced to them early on to like do a job in physics or chemistry.
Okay.
Other questions for the students?
Thank you. Thanks for bringing.
If y'all don't mind, you can stay for the end, but you're more than welcome. I know you got exams and tests. But, but once again, congratulations on going to, to getting accepted to the study abroad first and getting to go to Japan. Hope you get the, when you come back in the fall, I hope you will share some of your experiences with us.
Thank you.
And thank you all for bringing up the transcript and giving us information so that we could have a bigger conversation about that. We wouldn't have known about it without your voices. So thank you.
So keep, yes.
Good partnership.
Um, the board monitoring, the chair's role in the board monitoring, with Mike not here, we can be brutally honest.
Right. Is this four point six?
Four point six, yes.
Four point six, yes.
The chair's role. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's good. The written governance policies, tobacco, this is our first reading, so there's no, um, action for this, but discussion regarding this policy?
Other than our first paragraph, did anybody notice any differences? Seems like they're, uh, similar in terms of all the legal references. Yeah. So we just need to discuss this?
Where did this one sneak in?
It's sneak, it snuck in under eight B C.
Yeah, I know, but like I'm not seeing it after the chair's report, the file that I had.
It may have been one of the ones that didn't get sent, Krista sent copies.
Oh, there you go.
HIPAA, are we looking at HIPAA?
No, we're looking at tobacco.
Oh, right, okay.
Tobacco.
Here we have a tobacco policy. Being that four point six.
The federal compliant? No.
Here we go. Alex, we do not have a V S B. Oh, there you go, note to you. Ah, here are copies. Here you go. Here you go, here's one. And then here is one for you. All right. There you go. V S B A, our old one. Do you gentlemen need a V S B A? Have you got that? All right. I always like our first, our paragraphs at the beginning.
I'm really woefully undereducated on tobacco and the new ways. Is vaping considered tobacco?
That was going to be my question. As long as we understand vaping is underneath the word tobacco, because it still is tobacco. But I don't know if we need a specific vaping word in the policy. And this is just a discussion, right?
Yeah, this is discussion.
Yeah, so we might want to, because the V S B A doesn't have it. That was the one word I was looking for in the V S B A policy.
Right.
They may be updating it at this point, I don't know.
Right, right. Just as if it's all-inclusive around vaping also.
But do you know if we have another policy about vaping?
We don't have a second policy.
Uh-uh.
So what are?
It does say tobacco substitutes.
Mm-hmm.
Should we put like an EG vaping here, just to make it more explicit?
I think that's what this discussion is for, like so if you want to see different language or you want to add something like vaping or, or you know, just define it more thoroughly. This is what your discussion is about.
Yeah, I, I, I truthfully as a board member would be more comfortable at least had, be a little bit more explicit and do an EG somewhere with tobacco substitute, EG vaping.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just add it on there, because I don't think students are actually understanding the dangers of, I mean, it's starting to come out a little bit more.
But I think it would be wise to have that word in here, especially under the definition tobacco substitutes.
Any other comments?
I definitely prefer our first paragraph. Not sure of V S B, but it sounds, looks like everything else is the same.
Okay. I know, should we move on to the HIPAA insurance?
Yeah, and we're gonna bring that back with the added word vaping.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, do I need to make a motion for that, or is it?
No, it's just a discussion item. It can be captured in the notes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Minutes and then they could do certain revisions to the policy.
Sounds good.
So, here's what I have. Alexander asked if vaping is considered tobacco usage.
That's who asked if there was another policy for vaping. Rebecca said there is not. Tori prefers the first paragraph. So, um, discussion will come, what would, what do you want me in, what do you want in the minute so it's there regarding vaping?
For the next round, next is to discuss the word vaping, adding vaping to the policy.
Okay, so.
Under the definition of tobacco substitutes.
So during the second reading?
Yes.
During the second reading. To add vaping?
As an example of tobacco substitutes.
As in, I like that example of tobacco. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. HIPAA, um, policy number four three one one, privacy of health-related information. This is HIPAA. Discussion?
I don't see a V S, uh, V sec, a V S B A, um, policy to compare the two, so my assumption is.
Krista went online and it used to be one on there. I don't know if they're changing it or if you wasn't able to access it. So I don't, we didn't have a good example to show your comparison.
Okay.
So, but they did ask us to bring this to you tonight in case you have any other questions.
We don't have much of a scratch over HIPAA just in general, right?
Exactly, it's pretty much the rules.
Yeah.
Rules are the rules. Looks good. There's a lot of rules on here.
Yeah.
It's a lot of rules. It's good.
Totally on that one. So I mean, any more discussion?
Having to have, yeah.
Community engagement policy, four point two one, recent community activities?
Um, gosh, I did. Knocked on doors and got signatures. That's community involvement. Talked to a lot of people. That's fun. Oh, and our current charter commission?
Is gonna be, I, I wasn't there yesterday, so you don't.
It's good. It's, we're about to move into our reach out to community phase, which is nice.
And if you saw an email from Tori about, I, I think everybody got this, the new char, the charter of the school, I think.
I didn't send it to everyone. I just needed to get a copy. Yeah, and I have it. She, she sent me a electric, electric copy. Electric.
The main reason is the charter is gonna have an impact on our own charter, so it's good to kind of just review. And, and it also highlighted that our charter wasn't on our website, so hopefully that's.
Right, and they put a, helped us to get in to get that.
Oh, good, 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 okay.
Um, as a heads up, I did go to the Winuski translation thing on February eighth.
Yeah, and it was like well-attended.
It was really well-attended. Um, good to, a larger Nepali population was the largest one, but it was good-attended. And, and I think that will be enacted, but mainly only on the federal, I think, and state ballot as opposed to the local, um, translation. Um, and then the only other thing that I, please come to the Winuski Got Talent and you can egg me on because I guess I'm hosting it on March.
Excellent. Following in Margaret's footsteps.
I'm following in Margaret's footsteps in this. Big footsteps to follow, so.
He'll be wearing purple.
No, the, we only wear purple on Wednesdays. Any other community engagement? Okay, next agenda. Anything that we want to add?
Do you have to put the, what you look at that, you table? Does that, you can go there or not?
Right, feedback for the budgeting process?
That was tabled and then you had your first reading of those two policies and they'll come back next time.
And I think, um, at some point we need to ask for maybe in the executive session so that we can watch privacy is transcripts. That's what I got from one of the Focus on Learning. Upcoming important dates, um, February eighteenth is, is nineteenth or eighteen? Is a community dinner, um, with the budget and then don't forget to go out and vote on.
March third.
March third.
And we have our annual meeting on the second.
And where is the community dinner second?
Uh, the O'Brien Center.
Yep, March second is also, yeah, the town hall meeting.
And that'll be here in the Performing Arts Center. The city starts at six and we go on at seven thirty.
And what's that, the annual meeting?
Annual meeting. Any other?
When is it? March second.
Can someone check the date on the community dinner for some reason?
Yeah, it is the nineteenth.
It's Wednesday, the nineteenth?
Yes.
And the time?
Five thirty.
Okay.
And the annual meeting, March second, and what time?
The city goes on at six PM and the school goes on at seven thirty.
And that's here?
In the Performing Arts Center, yes, that's correct.
Good. Move to, um, can I get a motion to move to the executive session?
So moved.
Move to it, I think what we can. Wait, do I need to vote on it? Um, so all in favor of moving?
To executive session.
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
You just have to put to discuss negotiations.
Oh, oh, sorry, to discuss negotiations, thank you.